I pledge. Mother, thank you for this day. It was a pretty one. Thank you for this city and the people in it. Just ask for wisdom as we do the city's business in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one individual.
So first thing we have tonight is a proclamation, April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Candace Cherry and I'm with Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter. I am the Wilson County Advocate. We do have a satellite office in Florisville. We serve four counties, so we do Guadalupe, Gonzales, Wilson, and Karnes. We have a 24-hour crisis hotline and we provide shelter to victims of sexual assault and domestic violence, as well as counseling, park care, and other multiple things. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Every 68 seconds, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted. And in Texas, two in five women and one in five men are victims of sexual assault. And in the fiscal year of 2021, the Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter rendered 1,135 services to 210 survivors of sexual violence and provided 61 hospital accompaniments for sexual assault exams. According to a study conducted by Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin Institute on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, approximately 6.3 million Texans have been sexually victimized. Most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, and 91% of the victims did not report to the police. It is appropriate to salute the more than 20 million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the effort of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. National and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that result in the prosecution and incarceration of the offenders. Sexual violence is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round, and in order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And national and community organizations, businesses, and private sectors and the media are urged through the National Sexual Assault Awareness of Sexual Violence and Strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault.
Do you want to read the body? Okay. So now therefore, we, the undersigned, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Pope and all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideas of victims and those working toward awareness and prevention, and by participating in community affairs presented this 18th day of April of 2022.
And I just want to thank everybody for their continued support in this, figuring the victims and things like that.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We have no citizens in here, so we'll move to the consent agenda items, the minutes, and financial reports, and review and approve paid invoices for the month of March. I didn't see anything wrong. Look right here. There's a question I had, but I can't find it. I should have started.
Make the motion to approve the minutes for March 2022.
All in favor? All right, we have today, Regulusi, our representative and our city representative Phelps. Please give the presentation.
Hello. First, I apologize. I know it says that our new CEO will be here today, with it being Easter weekend. He had a family commitment. He doesn't get back into town until late this evening. So he already marked it for May. Said he put it in his calendar, so he should be here at the main meeting. So I'll double-check, make sure the time of this day doesn't change, don't change for May. We'll be here next month as well. Just to update y'all on the last quarter, starting with things that happened in January. It was election or appointment year. Mr. Aiken from Stockdale was reappointed as a representative, and so we did a realignment of the chair and vice chair. I was elected as the chair, and then Mr. Aiken remained vice chair. And so I've just turned over to leading the meetings, but still, it's all the same votes and things. But just I did more of leading the meetings and then the interaction with attorneys and CEO now. First of all, goes to the rest of the board. We talked about the 3% to the owner cities. One of the reasons we brought it up, because it's in our bylaws that it's the 3% that y'all get from Phelps every year, and how that went down last year because of our hedging of gas and that. And so we talked about bringing that back to see if we can change that amount. And one of the reasons was, in our reports, our financial reports, it looks like Phelps makes $3 or $4 million a year when you see net income bottom line. And so that was one of the main reasons. But when we got into diving into it, Marcy informed us of how that's not the total bottom line. That doesn't include the debt payments that we have, and the payments to y'all aren't already backed out of that. And so then we saw that the utility company really makes $300,000 to $400,000 a year, which isn't so much that we were going to really go into this and start changing those things with new developments coming, especially in Florisville. There's several subdivisions coming. We're hoping that that moves up that customer number, which generates more revenue, which then in turn gives more dollars back to the owner cities. So we left that as it was at the moment. Mr. DeHauta did want to discuss bringing up the bylaws in the future, see if there's any updates we'd like to make. Those were set back in the 90s, and so looking to see if there's anything we'd like to update there. The customer portal was completed, so customers can go see their 13 months' previous usage. And I think it's hourly, so they can go see when their peak times during the day, if they were using the washing machine at a bad time and it was running up their usage. And so try to work on how their bills are generated and they can do what they can to lower their electricity bills. Then Mr. Scoggan was, Tommy Scoggan, was elected as the Laverneia representative, replacing Sharon Tannerberger. Again, they're just advisory members. They don't vote. But he is the new Laverneia representative. We discussed that confidential standstill and tolling agreement with the February freeze last year. Still in a lawsuit, and it was extended until August 25th of 2022, so hoping that's the deadline to finally get an answer, so we know how we need to move forward, one way or another. So August is hopefully the final, but you know how those things go. It could go further. One good thing I wanted to report to y'all, as y'all should notice, we increased our scholarships to the owner cities. So before, it was $750 scholarships, one to Fall City, Pope, Stockdale, and Laverneia each, and two to Florisville. And last year, we discussed kind of changing that number. If you look at customer counts, Pope and Stockdale are much higher than Fall City and Laverneia are of the Phelps territory, and then Florisville is even higher. So the board elected to raise that dollar amount to 1,000, and also give Pope and Stockdale one more, and give Florisville two more. So now it's Fall City and Laverneia get 1,000-dollar scholarship from Phelps. Pope and Stockdale get two, and Fall City gets four. So that was one good thing. Do that? Do what?
Florisville.
Florisville, oh yeah. Oh yeah, Florisville, sorry. And then the youth programs, we continued that this year, where they do that matching per meter. So we continued that. Also, February, we offered the CEO position to Mr. Mark Crowson. He's a licensed engineer, a lot of years of experience, a lot in the private sector with working with utility companies and then selling or improving them. And so we have high hopes that he'll come in and really help our utility and work with our people and do some good things, especially with the growth that we're seeing. One of the good things to talk about is we approved the purchase of a new additional transformer. So we have a kind of a backup in place in Florisville substation. And he was able to work with our engineer. We did hire one at the end of last year to have it housed instead of contracting out. He came in, and so I had enough time to work together on it. So we're excited to see him jumping in and getting going with it. So he'll be here next month, and let y'all know more about him. I'll let him speak on all his accolades and things. But very, very exciting to have him with us. Last month, in March, we had our audits for 2021. We had the financial audit and the pension audit. Both were unmodified opinions, which means they're clean audits, good audits. And so everything was good on the financial aspect. As I mentioned, we purchased or approved to purchase an additional transformer from GE Prolet, or from Anexter, I'm sorry. It's a GE Prolet transformer. And then also, we discussed some potential updates to underground service from homes and looking at how that would work. I guess there's some issues with how underground's been, you know, the pre-work done before they come to tie in lines. It's looking at how the different options for that for the different cities. If it becomes a requirement, if they do underground, if Phelps does it, or contracts out, or if we have different certified people that people can use at the homeowner level, the local level, not at, you know, big subdivision-type things, but going from the street to the home. So that's one thing that we have to come in. And then really, the last thing, I had a community member last week bring up the, asked about fiber. You know, GDC does fiber, and electricity are kind of a multi-purpose company. And so that's my plan at our next meeting next week, is to see if Phelps has ever thought about that. We have the poles. GDC uses Phelps' poles to run their fiber. And so we're seeing if that is a possibility. One thing I told her is that I've heard of this startling that Elon Musk has released a satellite to Internet, and apparently it's blazing fast.
Too weird wait.
Yeah, it's just a long wait. So if that's fiber, fiber might be thinking of the fast, and he might take over. So I was going to ask you about that. I'll report to y'all. I know we have a little bit of fiber in town, but then there's a lot of subdivisions and outsides that are having a lot of issues trying to get a good call to Internet, to see if that's something Phelps has ever thought about or would want to look into. So that'd be another revenue stream for them and how that would work with cities and whatnot. So that's all I have. I don't know if y'all had any questions for me.
What happened today? No electricity.
Oh, I didn't hear too much, except that it was on the CPS transmission side. Yeah, and so I was a little surprised. They've had some issues in Laverneia. A lot of it has been, I think, I think there's been a couple here that the transformers are catching fire just from the, they're saying that the dust from all this wind is settling on there, and then when the dew comes in the morning time, it's creating a spark and it's catching them on fire. It said they've had quite a few. The school had theirs at the football field catch fire a few weeks ago. And then there's been several around, and so there's been some in Laverneia, not related to that, but kind of that same issue that they're kind of having these glitches, and then it's going down, but it's not quite visible, some of these. And so trying to work through them. It seems like it's been a lot of little ones and things, but hopefully we can get our system up and running. I know it's a lot of growth. I don't know if it's all related to that, but just trying to get everything, maybe things, older equipment, different things that we need to look at. So that's another thing that we're hoping Mr. Crowson can come in with fresh eyes and kind of help get us caught up and have it more reliable for everybody.
Anything you want to add? Thank you so much.
No problem. As I say, last next month, we'll be here in Mr. Gray's. Feel my momma's.
So we have an update on the construction of the new water tower to support the water cooler.
Plant fabricators, they're actually building the structure at the speed. Superior concrete service that come out of Dallas, they're part of the plant fabricators. That's who they use, so they're breaking ground. We spotted some water line. We're still waiting for another water line, but they're already breaking ground to go and set their concrete slab for the tower itself. Basically, hopefully before, at the end of the week. And they have to let us set for two, three days, and we'll figure out the process for the tower, how much they got completed.
How big's the slab?
Slab, it's going to be 27.
27 by 16?
27 by 16.
Two foot thick?
Two foot two. You know where the area is right now? It's going to be to the north of it. So you're going to see two stands right next to each other. It's going to be a little bit taller than the other stand. So hopefully we can, I think we had a pre-construction meeting early Friday, part of Thursday, so hopefully we feel good that everything's in play, that we can get this thing. It's already rolling around, so it's just a matter of getting everything together. So there's so many different parts of this thing. You've got plant fabricators, you've got the pipe fitters, you've got the electrician. So everybody's got to do their part within their timeframe. So that's, they've got a crane. The crane will be sitting there so all day long. So pay for that crane for one day, it's just a lot of cost. Our deal is trying to get that tower set and area on top of it within 12-hour period. This is all I got on the table.
Thank you. Next, you have the presentation of the 2021 racial profiling court submitted by Charles Sanchez, City of Pope. Chief, please.
Good evening, American Council, Rose. We all should have it in front of y'all. We had a 2021 racial profiling. It was given to the city this morning. They should have made copies for you. If I remember, I'll pay.
Well, you can, I mean, it's fine. We can do that and then just.
So 2021 TECO mandates for all law enforcement agencies here in Texas to submit a racial profiling report for the year. And it has to be submitted by March 1st of every year. We submitted it on January 31st, 2022, and y'all don't have it, but the racial profiling report is a full report of citations that we did issue. We had a total of 1,475 citations issued. And it breaks down to analysis of report by percentages of streets, areas that we have more vehicle, you know. So US 181, we had a total of 1,259 stops there, a total of 85%. The city streets were 7%, and the state highways, 541, were 90, which were 6%. Again, I wish y'all would have this so you can see here, but it's just an analysis that we have, and everything looked good. In addition, and pursuant to the reporting requirements, the City of Pope Police Department did not receive any formal complaints alleging any Pope police officer to be engaging in any racial profiling for the year of 2021. And we're great about that. We've never had a report ever since I've been here. So this is, hopefully y'all should get it soon. And it is, like I said, it's mandated, and if people want to download it, they should download it on the website. And it's open record.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and do your report?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
So for the month of March 2022, we had a total of 73 boats for service. 69 were written reports, and four were daily activity reports. Traffic enforcements for the month of March, we conducted 125 traffic stops. 65 citations were issued, and 88 warnings were issued. Non-traffic enforcements were two. One was a theft under 100, and the other was minor possession of tobacco products. And we had two city ordinance violations, two for dogs running at large. And with the summer coming around, we're having, we're seeing a lot more dogs running at large, quite a bit. And Buck and his guys have been helping me out, and we've been trying to catch these animals. And we are talking to the owners here. We've talked to them several times, and we've given them plenty warnings. So there were issued citations for dogs running at large. Hopefully, again, and I think we're going to get with you maybe in a couple of months. We're having quite a bit of dogs in. We need more. So in a few months, we'll talk about that. The code enforcements, no code enforcements, we had a total of nine animal control complaints, two city ordinance dogs running at large, two warnings, and two dogs were impounded. The next page, we had a total of four arrests, and as far as the second and third page, you can see what we had as far as all our cases for us.
Any questions for the chief?
What were the arrests for?
The arrests for, one was for possession of controlled substance, which was a dangerous drug, and possession of controlled substance penalty group one. We had one for warrant service, one for driving while licensed in valley with previous convictions, and one for driving no drug licenses.
Thank you so much for your report. I appreciate you. The next thing we have, tax report. And then we have the municipal court. For the month of March, the court had 63 citations that were submitted to us by the police department. There were 33 closed citations for the month of March, and 83 cases were submitted to the court for payment. Any questions, Judge?
Credit card. Thing's working out.
Oh, it's good. Thank you very much, Judge.
For the month of March 2022, we produced 5.7 billion gallons of water. This time last year was 7.5. Average per day was 185,000 versus 243. Maximum gallon per day for one day, 317 versus 410 last year. Minimum gallon per day was 2,000, which we had some electrical problems. Basically, 104,000 last year. Which water plant we took in, 9 million gallons. This time this year was 4.3. Average gallon per day is 128,000 versus 140,000 last year. The maximum per day for one day usage was 188,000 versus 158 last year. The minimum gallons was 105 versus 125 last year. If you look at our irrigation fields, we irrigated 69, 39,000 gallons of water on Field 1. Field 2 was 642, and Field 3, which is Mr. West, is 538,000 gallons. The total of 1.8 billion gallons of water was discharged. Ponds are right at 75% level. ELDs for Pond 1 was 64, ELD for Pond 4 was 8. PHD was 8.60 for Pond 1, 9.49 for Pond 4. It's extremely dry, we know it, so usage is starting to come up. We're seeing it. I think every day when the weather comes out, everybody's saying rain's coming, and then you can watch our, you know, they put use of water, they're kind of waiting on the rain, which is false hope, but anyway. Just to let y'all know, we have CY cleanup schedule for May 28, 2022, which will be held out here between my shop and the depot right there. There should be bringing some roll-offs, maybe two or three garbage trucks to take the basic household goods, large items, and trash that'll be on the schedule sheet. The right of amendment, because y'all know it's on April 23rd, 2022. We're trying to water the park a little bit, trying to get a little green. It's extremely dry, so we're kind of using good water to keep things green. So we're going to try to at least get one part of a green form that looks really good. So this weekend, we'll be rocking that. And you talked about the, we had a complaint about the Lily field with the small fencing.
Yeah, I didn't get ahold of Coach Leonard today, but I wanted to find out why. Because I thought that was an agreement between Lily and the high school, that that was okay.
The small fencing is, the high school puts it up. So they're complaining about the steel poles being used, but they're all pretty much covered dark. Like there, there's nothing really exposed, plus they got the yellow fencing on top. But I'll touch bases with Scott, Rush, and Warren, see. Because I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know who owns that fencing. Well, we don't own it, and we don't, we're not responsible for putting it up or taking it down.
So what I recall is there was something in the contract where Coach Bonwall said that if they had to take it down, it'd be a $100 charge. And so it seemed like it was something to do with the school, so I don't know why.
I know. Rose called me by a little dumb. I went out to look at it. In my opinion, it's safe because everything's covered up. I mean, you can still, TECO's holding fencing up, but that's something that's been there basically since I've been here on that small fencing. But I don't know who owns it. If it's Lily or the school owns it.
I don't understand where the complaint came from. Was it from the school or from Lily?
From the school.
He's a softball, he's a softball, he's a softball coach? Basketball. Awesome. Didn't he used to coach basketball? Well, I'll try. We can keep working on that tomorrow, find out what it is, the problem.
Hopefully tomorrow, we'll finish up on the Molotov in Plaza. They will work on the playgrounds. We'll try to get some more money scheduled here, get it put out.
Oh, it's beautiful. EDC helped do that before. We could sure do that. Did you want to?
I enjoyed it.
Yeah? It might be.
Yeah.
To rent the movies. How long does that take? To rent a movie? I mean, do you have to do it way far in advance? Might not be too late. Or your may need? You've already got an agenda out for your may need? Oh, that's right, I have that. You can't amend it because you're still more than 72 hours out from it. I'm good. You want to?
You can amend it for us, Russ.
I know we stopped because of the whole Pope thing. Yeah.
But yeah. The attendance was low, but I mean, it's a great city. I mean, I think it's a great city.
So what kind of movies? How many movies do you want to see?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
You guys can go first.
June has, didn't we do like every other week? We didn't do it every week.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks or so?
It was. We tried different things, and this is kind of dismal.
So you want to do it just in June, or do you want it like to the 4th of July?
So it needs a Facebook page then.
We tried putting it on Facebook also. We would send the notices to the school.
And we'd throw it on Facebook. We'd be in the farmyard, we'd come and we'd cook, catch snow cones.
Free beer.
We still serve our 40,000 hot dogs, everybody ate you three.
Yeah, we did free snow cones. We did free five more.
But it's school out. School is out this.
The problem with scheduling in early in June, you have complete games going on.
The lights.
The lights, the show, we know the movies.
I, you can find out a schedule.
It's in most everybody's town since.
July.
That's, I don't know, there was like 28, 30 people.
Well, we can talk about it. Well, we can talk about it.
Speaking of amphitheater, now, we need to refurbish the...
Screen.
Screen, one part, part of having repainted, and another part is that decking that's there, band used to use it, used the other band, but it's became so unsafe, and kind of, I want to say, dry rod, rod, we painted it twice, but we might consider maybe October, we couldn't have refurbished, and it's a little bit more expensive, but I'd like to do it, but the hardy plank, PVC poly planks, it's a little bit more expensive.
It lasts forever?
Yeah, there you go, and we, like I said, we definitely planned it, we painted that in.
Whatever color you want.
Yeah, we did that armor shield, we did that vinyl shield, we did it all in it.
I'm doing my fence with that, so.
The bones underneath are really good shape, you just got to check out the...
Okay, also, just tell them the guys before the meeting started, we have a vacancy, and so if you have someone that is interested, please have them send a bio to cityhall@cityofpope.org, and we'll declare the vacancy May, and then we'll vote to appoint, so I think we have two people at this time, so there's...
We'll vote next month for the EDC guys.
That'll be on the agenda next month.
So we have two people that are interested?
Sure do. And I don't, the EDC, I haven't, we've got two people who are interested also, and we have two vacancies, so that's what we do. So, that covers everything on our agenda, we are adjourned, thank you very much.